Did you get my text?
Hey, Richard.
There you go.
Yeah.
There's a few seats up in the front.
It's not like I'm not your sis, bro.
Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Buchanan City Commission. It's Wednesday, March twenty seventh, twenty twenty-three. It's seven p.m. and we call a meeting to order. Can you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
A flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we roll?
Please.
Dennison.
Here.
Weeden. Giantski.
Yes.
Money.
Present.
Swam.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Commit the motion.
There's support.
I'll support.
And keep, can we roll, please?
Giantski.
Yes.
Money.
Yes.
Swam.
Yes.
Dennison.
Yes.
Gary.
Thank you. Andrew, consent agenda. Is there a motion to consent agenda? Oh, I'm sorry. I just get public comment. This time, I'd like to open up for public comment on agenda items only. If you'd like to make a public comment, please make your way to the podium, state your name for the minutes. Is there anyone wishing to make a public comment on agenda items? Do we have any more chairs in here?
There's some piled back chairs, like, in the corners.
Well, there we go.
There's a few more chairs up front here. Okay, so we're still in public comment. If you'd like to make a public comment on the agenda, please make your way to the podium, state your name for the minutes, and we'll make a public comment. Okay, say the other. Do you want to make a consent agenda? Does anyone like to make a motion to adjourn to consent agenda?
I'm going to give consent agenda.
Is there support? Thank you. Can we roll, please?
Giantski.
Yep.
Money.
Yes.
Swam.
Yes.
Dennison.
Yes.
Carrie.
Okay, moving down to scheduled management for Mr. Joe Kruger of BYSBA.
You guys giving away candy bars, Dave? Hey, Nate Mark here, too. So, we are representing BYSBA.
Please, oh, excuse me. I'm sorry, Joe.
Yep.
Can we, can we please refrain from speaking or speak as before?
Go ahead, Joe. Hi. Yep, Joe Kruger, representing the BYSBA, which is the Buchanan Youth Softball Baseball Association. What we're here today is looking for final approval for a shed that will be placed next to the current two sheds on the southeast side of the corner of Smith Park. It primarily will be used for additional field equipment. The structure will be a prefab shed just dropped on a ten by twenty-four approximately on a kind of stone foundation, so no, no permanent foundation that could be moved. We are growing, so we have three hundred and thirty-two kids this year. We've got some opportunities to get some better equipment for the fields, to have the kids have a better facility, so that's kind of what we're looking for. Our opening day is May fifth and sixth, and we've got six weeks of ball after that, plus All-Stars. So, all we're doing is looking for final approval, because I know if it's city-owned property, we're just representing BYSBA to utilize a shed that's there.
Any other questions?
I'll make the most that we approve the new shed for placement at Smith Park as presented.
Thank you. There's support?
I'll support.
Thank you. Can we roll, please?
Money.
Yes.
Swam.
Yes.
Dennison.
Yes.
Giantski.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, guys.
Good luck, guys.
Thank you.
Can you find all your coaches?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Close, but close, yeah.
Okay, moving down to resource by department committees and boards, starting with the Buchanan Tree Friends, Mr. Richard Martin. Richard Martin, nine twenty-two. The Buchanan Tree Friends are planning an April twenty-second planting in the north neighborhood of thirty trees. April twenty-second happens to be Earth Day, and all the department heads have been notified, I believe. Is that correct?
Kind of.
Okay, I forget. We're working on it.
We're good.
Speaking of Mike, I hope we can count on you for digging holes.
Yes, we will give you a hand.
Fantastic. That's all I have. Let you know, we're planning on having a planting on the twenty-second. Any questions?
I'll move to approve the spring tree planting on the north side neighborhood on April twenty-second.
Thank you for your support.
This is money. I'll support.
Thank you. Can we get number one?
Swam.
Yes.
Dennison.
Yes.
Giantski.
Yes.
Money.
Yeah.
Carrie.
Thank you. Okay, moving down to friends of McCoy Creek Trail with Mr. Gary Clark.
Jerry Weller, one-six-four-eight-five, our new since chairman of the McCoy Creek Trail Group. I brought with me this evening Susanna Dugno from Whitman. She has the facts for the presentation.
Thanks, Gary. All right, couple of updates. On the current trail project, we are in the design phase. We are currently have a couple of dates that we're trying to hit right now. Survey is completed. We're designing. We have a coordination meeting with our friends at River Saint Joe to talk about how that trail fits on their property in April. In May, we're looking to have a open house for anybody to see the preliminary plans, ask questions, see what we're planning to do. And then in June is when we are submitting our first preliminary set of plans to the state of Michigan for their first review. So those are kind of our big couple of deadlines in the next couple of months. One of the things we were also able to take advantage of, Be Healthy Baryon offered to represent, it's bigger than Buchanan, but Buchanan, Buchanan Township, and then gets a little bit into Mouse Township, looking at that next phase of project. So we put together an estimate for a trail that actually includes this current section, so the McCoy Creek Trailhead to the end of River Saint Joe Properties, and then all the way down Walton Road to Elwoodberry Island. And we broke it into three separate sections, and that was able, that was sent in to Senator Peter's office, and feedback was given, and it sounds like right now they're considering basically doing the first two sections, which is the current section that we're under design, and then the next one, which would go all the way to thirty-one.
To the bypass.
To the bypass, yep. So we're waiting to hear hopefully good news on that, but it was really great that Be Healthy Baryon will be a kind of a community representative and tie these groups together. And just to pass along a really nice compliment that we received from M.D. We had a meeting with them a couple of weeks ago. They said that these communities in southwest Michigan are working together better than anywhere else in Michigan. So just to let you know, thank you for that cooperation. Those that use the trails, I think, are very appreciative.
Those are my thoughts, and that's what go over.
Yeah, the meeting in May, we're actually going to approach the city about having the meeting here. We're going to invite all the neighbors along the Shermer Parkway, going out to the bridge. They will get a letter inviting them to the meeting, so they can't say we didn't move them. I did have one other. Oh, the Congressman Walberg has a, he sent out a request for programs, and Marcy Hamilton, which works, who works up in Benton Harbor, picked up on that, and we have put together, as Susanna said, in three different sections. And in his first reply was he wanted to move forward with the project. He loves this area. He loves the fact that we're connecting Buchanan, Michigan, to South Bend through Niles. He loved the fact that we're going to combine two states. That was a big, big plus on our side. And he pretty much gave us, we don't have it ninety-nine percent yet, but we're getting there, that he wants us to go after the first two phases, which would be approximately three, three million dollars. So the second section would be a two million dollar grant to Be Healthy Baryon, which would make this project. And then we just have to worry about the next section, and I'm sure Patrick will have enough money by then to donate to get that done. Any questions?
No, but before you sit down, Susanna, I'm not sure you've been here to get formally recognized for the amount of work that you've put in to help us do what we're doing. So thank you very much.
I think between Susanna and Marcy Hamilton, they're the, they're the worker bees that get the work done, so.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving down to community development report with our work.
Thank you, Mayor, commissioners. Rich Murphy, community development director, just have a couple of things. If these resolutions seem familiar to you, that's because they were in front of you a couple of meetings ago. We're gearing up for two grant applications to the DNR, one for ADA accessible kayak launch at Riverfront Park, and another for some pretty cool playground equipment at Victory Park. These resolutions are required for me to move those applications forward by our April first deadline. We received just a little bit of feedback from the DNR that they wanted the public comment portion pulled out. Out of an abundance of caution, these are large grants, large sums of money. We didn't want there to be any technicalities, so we're kind of doing a do-over here, and we just asked that the minutes will reflect that we did specifically call out for public comment for each of the projects.
So the first resolution was for the kayak launch project. Is there any public comment on this head resolution? Okay, saying none. Move down to the second resolution.
It's, they're separate, so you open and then make the motion and then open.
We're going to make a motion. This is money. I've moved to approve resolution twenty-twenty-three dot O-two slash O-six to amend the kayak launch, kayak launch project.
Thank you. There's support?
I'll support.
The kayak launch is not going to interfere with the boat launch at all, is it?
No. The site plan that I put forward for the Spark Grant lays out the same location for the kayak launch, and so we're looking at the whole parcel holistically, so to answer your question, no.
Okay, just for my, and everybody else's, approximately where would that be compared to where the boat launch is at down there?
The boat launch was proposed here.
Right.
Is existing here, kayak launch here.
All right, all right. Thank you, Rick.
Yeah.
Dennison.
Yes.
Giantski.
Yes.
Money.
Yes.
Swam.
Yes.
Carrie.
Okay, now can, for the resolution about Victory Park project, is there any public comment on that resolution? Speaking now, someone can make a motion?
I also move to approve resolution twenty-twenty-three dot O-two slash seven.
Amended.
Amended.
Thank you.
Welcome. I'll support. Thank you. Can we roll, please?
Giantski.
Yes.
Money.
Yes.
Swam.
Yes.
Dennison.
Yes.
Carrie.
Thank you. Thanks for all your work on that, Rich. Okay, moving down to the finance report with our interim city manager, Mr. Timlitch.
Okay, thank you. I'm Timothy Lynch. I'm the interim city manager here, and we've been working on our investments and rates of return so we can get, generate some interest income. And tonight, we are seeking commission approval to authorize Sturgis Bank and First Source Financial, First Source Bank as financial institutions to execute investments with. Currently, we're allowed to invest with Honor Credit Union and Horizon Bank, both fine institutions. By including these two additional institutions, it would allow us to diversify our investment options by maintaining investment at more than one or two institutions, and would also foster a better competition among the financial institutions for better interest rate returns. I have had a professional relationship with Sturgis Bank and with First Source Bank in my prior employment, and they, both of those firms, banks, were included as authorized institutions for investments. They were vetted back then, and I went ahead and vetted them again this time, so I can provide some information to you. We, we did find them to be suitable for investing public funds with reasonable rates of return while maintaining acceptable levels of risk with safety of principle being our foremost objective. You've got to have your principal be safe. And so, in the spirit of due diligence, I requested and reviewed their most recent financial statement reports, the ten K report for First Source, the annual financial report from Sturgis, and also some call reports that are in the banking industry. And as expected, I found them to be on solid financial footing. And each bank, as of early March, was offering short-term certificates of deposit in the four and a half to five percent range. Sturgis also offers an interest-bearing checking account that we could utilize. And the credentials for Sturgis Bank, they are a four-star Bauer rating. Bauer is a financial rating service, and four out of five stars is excellent. They are well-capitalized with the capital ratio at twelve point four percent. To be deemed well-capitalized by finance, by the financial regulators, you have to have a capital ratio of at least eight percent, and Sturgis is at twelve point four percent. Sturgis net income in twenty-twenty-two is at six point six million, up from three point two million in two thousand seventeen. So they've been steadily increasing their net income, and they doubled since two thousand seventeen. So very fine financial institution, and I've done investments with them in the past, and I have every confidence in going forward with them. As far as First Source Bank, they had their net income at, in twenty-twenty-two, at a hundred and twenty million dollars, up from eighty-two million in twenty eighteen, so they've been steadily increasing. They're well-capitalized at fourteen point eight percent. First Source Bank has had thirty-five years of consecutive dividend growth, and they have a five-star Bauer rating, which is superior. And so, I would recommend that we approve both of these financial institutions so we can diversify our financial investments.
Any questions?
I just want to bring up a point of order before we can start. Patrick, you know, with Robert's rules, I did, when I called you out on the last one for the list station, technically I was wrong. As long as you say that you have an involvement, you still have the right to vote. Am I correct in that count?
He is correct. It is up to him. It is his decision if he feels that he can make the right decision without, with his interests.
So you don't have to technically abstain. You just have to state your involvement. Does that make sense? And I mean, I really dug into this after the list station, because it would have sped that up a lot, so.
Yes, I'm, I'm aware. I understand.
Okay, thank you. That's all I wanted to say. I'll make the motion to move to approve resolution twenty-twenty-three period zero-three slash one-zero, naming Mayor Sean Dennison and Treasurer Deb Perez as authorized signers for Sturgis Bank.
Thank you. There's support?
Money, I'll support.
Can we roll, please?
Giantski.
Yes.
Money.
Yes.
Swam.
I'm saying, lawyer.
Thank you. Dennison.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Someone can make a motion on the, the second part of that?
I'll move to approve resolution two-zero-two-three dot zero-three slash eleven, meaning Sean Denn, Mayor Sean Dennison, Treasurer Deb Perez is the authorized signer of First Source.
Thank you. There's support?
This, money, I'll support.
Thank you. Can we roll?
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now, the clerk report.
So I am Cal Langston. I know there's a lot of you here, and I have a slight understanding of probably election-related. So if you don't know me, I'm the city clerk. I'm the communication to the city commission from you guys. But I also had, on the other side, I am the election administrator for the city, and the one that runs the elections, every election that we have come through here. So I was just planning on doing an update. We do have a May second, twenty-twenty-three, special election. Polls will be open on that Tuesday from seven a.m. to eight p.m. We do have only one proposal. There were two in the beginning. Lake Michigan College has pulled out and decided that they were going to run in August. So you will have another election in August. That's not for sure, but ninety-nine percent. So I wanted to tell you guys this. We as a city have nothing to do with the school bond. We run the election. We do not have the information for the school bond proposal. We will direct you to the people that put the proposal together, and that would be Buchanan Community Schools, and they should be answering it because they're the ones that know. I would ask everybody, no matter what side you are on, to have respect for each other as a community, as a city here. I've seen some things this past week that it hurts. We see it on the news all the time. We don't want to be that. Have respect for each other and your guys' opinions. And respect the election officials, these election workers that are going to be working in this election. They're putting their time and effort into something that they don't need to do, and they're doing it because everybody has the right to vote. And we don't want to make anybody feel that they don't have the right to vote, okay? So thank you for listening to my soapbox. I'm going to get back down to, so we have the proposal. If you were on the absentee application list, there are six hundred and fifty-two current city residents that are on the permanent list. Two hundred and fifty-two of them have came back to my office so far. Those ballots will be going out tomorrow. I was able to finish preliminary testing this morning, so... I was able to finish preliminary testing this morning, so if you did sign up for that, look for that next five to seven days. If you do want to vote by absentee, you are, um, always able to, all the way up until the Monday before the election. There are certain rules about mailing out when you get closer to the election, but you can always vote all the way up to the Monday before. There is no early voting for this election, nor will there be early voting for any local proposal. It will only be for federal and state. So, we have that and my other part is going into just a little bit of an update with the agreements. I was at Institute the week prior. There's a lot of different election updates going on, a lot of different drafts going on, um, legislation. They are, for early voting sites, they are pushing that we go into agreements with other municipalities to hold EV, uh, EV sites. Um, myself and the City of Niles clerk and Beacon Township clerk have all talked about going into agreement with each other and we are thinking that they will cut down on cost. But the only problem is our residents, Beacon Township residents, would have to go to the City of Niles for an early voting site. Um, we can only hold it in one place, but that means the three of us clerks are not working three weeks straight, twenty-four hours a day. We're actually able to lean on each other a little bit and it's costing means-wise. Um, if we decided to run the early voting during federal and state elections, it's gonna cost us about a hundred thousand dollars. And that's something that we do not have as a city to spend that. This will cut our costs down to one-third. It will avoid us having to buy new equipment because we will be able to utilize our equipment through the community and everything. So I did actually, I had a conversation with, uh, County Clerk Sharon Tyler was here today dropping some stuff off to me. There looks like the county is wanting to go into agreements too, to make it universal for the whole county, which I absolutely love, we're a team, we work together, let's figure this out. So, there's a lot of drafts going on out there, the commission received that, um, it's really up in the air and I will keep you guys updated as soon as I know more, so.
I just have one question.
Yeah.
Since they dropped out, do they still have to pay for the ballot?
So they, that's a county question. It doesn't matter for us because I'm still gonna build it, so the county has agreements with schools. So the schools agree with the county to run the elections and the county agrees with the local clerks to run elections. So we send our payments to the county of what we're charging for ballot costs, for postage, all of that, they figure it out on their end between, because I mean, you got to think, Beacon Community Schools, that's five jurisdictions that they, they cover. So they're gonna be built for everybody that has that, so. Depends on what they have.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I just, I have one comment. There's a lot of new faces in here tonight that I haven't seen at meetings much. Um, so if you're new to City Hall or meetings and this is your first time meeting Cal, our city clerk, um, as much as I hate to say this, I encourage you to ask her questions if you have questions.
I will.
She's extremely busy, but she is a wealth of knowledge and we are lucky to have her.
My door is always open.
I'll move to allow Eric Langston to pursue agreements with local municipalities or possible county agreements for early voting sites.
Nice, that's it.
Thank you, do you have a roll call, please?
Slim?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Fianski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Carries.
Thank you. Uh, at this time, um, we're very briefly, we're going to try to be very brief, enter closed session to consider, uh, some client, attorney-client privileged opinion memos regarding real estate matters. Someone can make a motion to enter?
I also move that we go into closed session.
Can you?
Yeah. I move to approve entering closed session pursuant to MCL fifteen, two-six-eight, section eight, one D and H to consider an attorney-client privilege opinion memo regarding a real estate matter.
This is money I'll support.
Thank you, do you have a roll call, please?
Dennison?
Yes.
Fianski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Slim?
Yes.
Very close.
Did you bring a tuckie from under office?
Can you commission that again?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Stop it. Where did you, I'm Amazon.
I don't have those. Yes. Those are the best.
Yeah, right. Apple doesn't sell them.
I should wear those tonight. Hey, Andrew.
Hey, what's up?
Hey, can I give you this money or what? It's your husband's. Of course you want it. He's gonna be so mad at me if I give it to you. I'll give it to you, I promise. Hey, your finances, my business, I'm just owing you what I, what my husband's, husband's. I just don't want to forget to give it to you. Now, don't even sound like that. It sounds like my mom. I would not put that in my back pocket. Totally. I could not. I was like...
Adorable. No. No, because my husband's...
Oh. I was like, what's going on? Man, I'm, my, my, she's hooking up. I have, on Thursday, I have, uh... Oh, I have, I'm on an interview. Thursday, it's... Oh. What's first home game? Because Carson's first golf match is on Thursday. Just what I wanted to do. It is.
When is their first golf match? DePannan's?
Yes.
When is that?
April third. Do you have a child golf?
Yes.
Who is your child golf?
Austin Gray.
Oh, Carson golfed with them today.
Yes, apparently they all wrote, no, he's a freshman. Austin's a freshman. But apparently they all wrote together.
Oh, they wrote together. Okay, yes, so he must, so he, so he must have written with a...
He did, yes.
Okay, yes, I, I was thinking he was in his, uh, foursome, so he must, he was not...
I don't know.
He was telling them who all, uh, he was telling me who all they... I would encourage you to... Well, last year, I, yeah, I'm, uh, I just...
That's what I was kind of telling Austin, that he grabbed him.
I think it would be a really nice, just coach, just by, like, even, I don't know, because, yes, Carson's a freshman, I'm sure they have the same issues, but my mom would end up, and my mom's retired.
I tried to sponsor up at golf course on my lunch hour, they got, I'm sitting on my desk. Like, that's, okay, they got, because when I was walking into the school, I was, had this video on and going like this to talk to you guys. After the guy came, like, oh my God, they just got a really, sort of close-up view.
You can tell if you have an ear infection or something.
So, uh, another suggestion, might be just, you bring him in the morning to school. Bring your clubs and we put them in the gate colors room.
And he just grabs them.
And then they grab them the day, then that would just save you the trip.
Jake, Jake and Austin's are in the back of my car right now. I gotta drive back.
Yeah, but I told you, I, I told Austin, I said, I am not dropping your clubs on a empty on my lunch hour. It's not happening, no. Just they take them in the morning, find the teacher that they're comfortable with. They will, but Carson's a, a night, so he has to have his... I mean, it just depends if, like, he's gonna go get... Yeah. Ask him, ask a teacher, like, I don't know, Gabe always lets Carson.
That's word mine is somebody that has... That are down there.
Well, he just has... You don't, yeah.
All right, brother, I want to say...
Oh, congratulations. Are you in vice of lady with Ted?
Yeah. And Grant, we're gonna...
That's Claire's birthday.
We're gonna tape Grant and, well, she said, um, my little brother.
Yes, that's what she's gonna walk in and make her work on.
Oh, exciting. Yeah.
She's, uh, she'll sub, when she'll come, maybe she's...
Oh, yeah, I was just asking, she asked her.
So occasionally when their teacher...
I brought some flyers, I put them by the door, but it's not like, but again, unless you're with a tour, it's not like it's a, it's like... So, what else does it do? Want to get it thorough.
Well, the church was supposed to use this, uh, be the tree, uh, to train their...
They don't know about it at all, they don't know about us, they might not be planning it.
Hi, I mean, I, I will know more. She really, really wants her, she applied at the top. Mud yard, when I, I'm on, I'm tired. Should at least apply, just to...
You, I know, I ain't gonna stop you anyway, I don't know why you actually asked me. That was just a courtesy ask, because he was still gonna stand up.
That was, like, after I talked to them, I'm like, okay?
On a bad rep at teachers.
That was, like, I think, I guess, I presented, I was like, no. Uh, no, you probably tell that to your mother, show that, um, yeah, after, yeah, something I really want to do. They'd say they're passionate, they'd say, it's just, it's just... I know she used to be a free man. I still think, I need to tell her that we actually had this whole carnival party in the church, which was, uh, state of the... Would you send those emails? To check her, uh, so how she, um, she had a breakup, she was, uh, she was all the way for her school. She wanted to, she wanted to, she wanted to, she didn't have a, she didn't have a sister. She was aggressive and, uh, we got it fixed. And I was like, I can be a more, my, my, I won't... I'm like, I could make her take it to the club. She just said some training, I was like, oh, I just... I could have probably, I was like, great, wow. One day, the person stopped in session, uh, for one, six hours, about even, asked her, like, what is, she said to them, she's like, this is...
Well, it is, that's... I mean, it's a good equation, but it's bad that the teachers are coming in, you're expecting...
Oh, just... But so, I brought it to them, so they're not gonna, they're not gonna... Oh, I saw she should go there, or she could do some break party, so. I thought those kids are all talking, and so, they're just like, when I was... And they still, like, they're all like, the pressure...
Were they security? No, our building's... And she was like, no.
They were gonna put it, she's there, like, we know.
I, I literally, I saw, I saw, I saw, I was like, I saw her, but I do, if she don't want, I would, right, uh, I'm shocked, she was like, oh, she, she wasn't...
I'm a mom, I got eyes. Oh, sorry, too much.
I was like, I'll take your...
I'm like, I, I, basically, I, 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 I'm a great teacher, you know, like, I'm... Like, do I need, oh, am I freaking out, am I freaking out?
I can make a really cool, yeah. So I didn't know, yeah. They sounded like, pretty interesting.
No. No, we just came up a bunch and all, no idea. Or, they, 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 they have just information about actual donations about... And then on Tuesday, they, uh, they're...
Been visiting, like, a whole day, right? Then you can, like, open their screen door or whatever and just put it in.
Not bad. She's, 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 I'm like, 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 I'm So. Me, through. From. Late. That everything. Like. So. He's already. He's one of my. We're talking. So that's. I'm not. And I. So. I don't. I mean, it's, but it's kind of attached. There's. It's. I'm. Well, just. Oh. I. It's kind of like. Hey. I don't know. Like, I'm. I don't. I don't. What I'm trying to. So that's. Fashion. I don't. Fashion.
That is. So I don't. I don't think.
I don't. I don't have.
I know. He's skilled. I'm glad he's good enough. But I. You got to be. Just.
My dogs. That's, I think one of my dogs is coming out of a week. The dog. That was. I didn't. I just want to. One time.
I know. Whenever you're money. I know, but I am. Only. I just. Went over. Because you're not, um. Yeah. You gotta do not.
It's raining. They're.
So he tries to. Stop, I can't, I can't. Down. Like, it's like. You're with you.
Already done that.
Um. But so we tried to. We have. But then.
I wouldn't.
Better fish than being dead. Yeah. She actually gets them in the boat.
I even the little ones. I bet he has. I need, um. I'm honest. Probably felt so better. I mean, I think it's. Also, Kelly, Kelly tipped my. This party.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Cause I have.
Like, I have those. It wasn't like.
I'll. I'll, um, I'll. I said, you're bad and I'm like. Do you think? I don't. My mom's. I don't. But, um, I have my. I. Oh, well, he got. And then he didn't have the right tag on it.
Okay. Like, when you go to the left or the right.
Okay. The one lady. Usually. It's. What if. Um, you just. Go. Oh, I do know that. Yeah. I know. Okay, so. Okay. Probably. I don't know if I know. Or. What is. I think. Well, it's. Um. Are you guys? Are you guys? Because. I could probably stop by and use that. Like, you guys see their sign, I need to sit in their garage.
Absolutely.
So, um, but I, um. I. I know. Yeah.
Ken, I know is out there, but he has his sign. Like, the other way. I know that's. To that. I'm trying to get. No.
For our. Our bed together.
It was just. I know they're. I want to. Yeah, I don't think. She was. I mean, I'm sorry. Carrie and me. How. Yeah. Your dog is a big girl.
You're so.
(laughing).
Let's see. Make a motion to reenter.
This is money, I move to reenter open session.
Bianski.
Yes.
Money.
Yes.
Slim.
Yes.
Yes.
You're open.
Okay. Let's consider approving a ground lease for six oh six Clark Street. Due to agreements for the DBW construction site, six oh six Clark has to be owned or leased by. The building authority of the city, if you can, some of your motions.
I'll make that motion, I move to approve a ground lease. Ground leases for six oh six Clark Street.
Thank you, there's work. Thank you, can I roll call please?
Bianski.
Yes.
Money.
Yes.
Slim.
Yes.
Denison.
Yes.
Carrie.
Thank you. Let's consider approving a RFP process for the sale of one oh seven West Front Street, the Ross Sanders House, and proposed RFP document.
I'll move to approve the RFP process and the proposed RFP document for one oh seven West Front Street, Ross Sanders House.
One second.
You, roll call please.
Money.
Yes.
Slim.
Yes.
Denison.
Yes.
Bianski.
Yes.
Carrie.
Thank you.
Okay. Communications. Oh. May I? May I? Oh.
Communication.
General. Anything?
Nope. Trying to.
All right. Okay, we're gonna move down to. Apparently, look, it all went. Non agenda items only. I would ask you to please address the city commission. And the city commission only when making your comments, if you'd like to make a public comment on an non agenda item. Just make your way to the podium. Stay ready for a minute.
Chief Harper Burnett, um, reason I'm up here is in line with the mission of our police department. We are holding two workshops related to our community policing, so one is going to be. How to raise discipline or self-discipline of responsible and socially skilled children and teens in today's world. That's gonna be April sixth, from six to seven thirty, it's gonna be at the fellowship hall of Buchanan Seventh Avenue Church. And then the week after that, we're going to be doing a workshop on coping with loss and recovery. At, at the same time and same occasion, we had a local business that donated the books, so the first ten that show up for the, uh. Emotionally intelligent parenting will get a free book and for the grieving, uh, first twenty will get a free.
Here.
Thank you.
Hey, anyone else wish to make a public comment?
Hello, I'm Carrie Franklin, who lives at three ten West Fourth Street. Um, I'm a nineteen ninety-two graduate of Buchanan Community Schools, and actually, my children are gonna be the sixth generation to go through the schools. With that being said, this is very personal to me, so I am gonna continue reading from here, so I keep myself on track. Um. I'm here today to address two closing comments that were made by commissioners during the last session. The first was a comment pertaining to why was the bond issue being brought up at a city meeting? In addition to not only trying to be transparent and spreading the word about the upcoming election, I also want to point out that we are called Buchanan Community Schools. All other surrounding schools, with the exception of Niles, refer to themselves as Drensbury Public Schools, Doajic Union Schools, St. Joe Public Schools, and Briny One School District, I think you get the point. Uh, we should all take community part of our title to heart. Uh, the city and schools should work together to build a stronger community, and you can't have one without the other. Good schools don't entice people to move here or to stay, but great schools do. The second is regarding a campaign initiated and led by one of the commissioners to oppose the bond. Dan Bianski admitted in an open session that he spent a lot of effort and time making these red door hangers, which are being spread across our community. While I'm disappointed that a commissioner chose to oppose something that will only help build this community, it quite honestly infuriates me that his hangers are filled with lies and at best have truths. He attended the school board working session when the bond details were first presented. He also had numerous conversations with superintendent Mrs. Robinson, um, where she explained the changes, and he had another face-to-face meeting with another bond committee member. Um, where examples of actually the tax impact were shared. Uh, the truth is, he had the facts, and yet he continued to create a document with knowingly false information. To kind of take this apart and give you some examples, this is, again, the banner that was created by Dan. The first point here says essentially, essentially the same proposal vote is rejected in November. Um, there was a slide presented to everybody, which is included on our bond website as well, showing the differences. The major items of contention with the last bond were the turf field and the moving of the bus garage. Both of those have been eliminated, and we have made changes based on numerous, um, sessions that were held in both November and December. School enrollment is declining. This is true for the twenty twenty numbers, um, which actually you admitted to using. That was during the COVID pandemic, uh, when some families chose to pull their kids and have them homeschool. Since the time, there's been an increase in enrollment. This year, there, there's more than twenty-six students over last year. So we choose not to use the updated data, which is purposely defeat deceitful, and quite honestly, I believe it to be unethical. Um, student-teacher ratios, not even sure why this one is being shared, but again, the figure is not correct. Um, I looked at numerous sites, um, the one that is used most regularly is MI School Data dot org. Um, this site shows twenty-one, but I can assure you that if you take the time to ask the teachers at Ottawa and Moccasin, their class size is more around twenty-five. Um, it's definitely not a matter of having too many teachers, if that's the point we're trying to make. Costing the average homeowner four hundred dollars a year, I read my personal scenario, my husband and I both work, we have a nice house, and my personal impact will be a hundred and eighty dollars annually. This is quite honestly about the average, I have yet to actually generate one that resulted in more than two hundred dollars, two hundred and ten dollars a year. Taking the average home value and the average household income, the tax impact for a homestead property owner in Buchanan would only be forty dollars a year. That's three dollars and thirty, three cents a week and eleven cents a day. No idea how you came up with the four, four hundred dollars, but I think you had the facts, or I know you had the facts, and I think everybody can determine his why.
Ms. Franklin, that's three minutes.
Would you like me to read yours?
You can continue. Sure.
Okay.
That, go home to there.
You're in the middle of May, one eighteen Shermer Parkway, I think this is too important not to read. So new gyms will not increase students' academic performance scores. The plans call for one additional gym at Moccasin Elementary, the existing one doubles at the cafeteria. Contrary to his beliefs, there are numerous kids throughout the school system that would not be, uh, not be in school if there weren't for sports. It's not just the gyms, but the amazing coaching staff, the team bonds, and the life lessons that keep some of the kids dropping out.
I can't hear. They're talking.
Okay.
Could you speak into the mic, please?
Yes, I will do that for you, sir. It would be my pleasure.
For us all folks that don't hear.
Okay. Here we go. So, um. Here we are. Talk to the coaches, listen to their stories. It does not take long to see the impact of the sports that plays in child's life. When you are, when you are, when you are an athlete, you have to hold a certain GPA to be eligible. School is not for everyone, but they are forced to attend classes, get good grades, and, and upon doing that, they are able to participate in something they are passionate about. Closed and consolidated redundant class space in grammar schools. I'd like to know where this redundant class space is. Elementary schools are forced to share their library and music classes, the gym doubles as a cafeteria, students are being toward.
Tutor.
Sorry, tutored in the hallways. Teachers don't have conferences, con- conference rooms to meet with the parents in private, there are no empty or redundant classrooms. And closing another grammar school is not an option, as, as the classrooms are bursting at the seams as it is. What can be done with seventeen point five or twelve million dollars? The bond budget has been shared. At, at that point, you would have to pick up, to pick a school. Once you touch Moccasin, you must comply with ADA regulations, which means making a lot of, uh, renovations. Something which should have been done years ago. The high school is a hundred years old. The, the, the votes are good, but the infrastructure. It is in need of serious updates. Would the preference be to come back to the community after five years and ask for more money? This is just one of the door hangers being spread around Buchanan. While I don't have confirmation who created the other version, I can assure you that it is full of lies. It references the bus garage, which has been removed and bleachers need. Okay, not a problem. Somebody else. I'm. Thank you, ma'am.
Couple more sentences.
Right there.
KP Shelton, one fifteen North Detroit Street, um, public school, public school, uh, supporter. It references the bus garage, which has been removed and bleacher needs at the middle school, which have been addressed. Bottom line is, how can you sit as a commissioner and knowingly spread lies and misinform the citizens of Buchanan? This man cannot be trusted.
Thank you.
Anyone else we should make a public comment? Hang on, Mr. Warren. Oh, go ahead, Dan.
Yeah.
And.
I'm Von Rhym, I'm at the three thirteen West Front Street, Buchanan. I'm of the opinion that at least a majority of the board of education members and some of the city commission members don't believe that a large part of the Buchanan residents are suffering severely from the current high rate of inflation and the current high gasoline prices. Some of them think the problems are due to financial mismanagement by families. Neither of these views are accurate. The median income of Buchanan residents is twenty-five thousand, thirty-five thousand dollars. Forty percent of the school students receive free or reduced-cost school lunches. Ram Love is having financial difficulties furnishing food to needy families. Ram, Ram Love reports me that they're receiving many cases where families can pay their taxes and water sewer bills and mortgage their rent and other basic expenses, but they have no income left over for food. So they go to Ram Love to get their food. Inflation and gasoline prices have been affecting me too, but I have been able to contribute two hundred and fifty dollars to Ram Love. I encourage you all to make cash or gun, or grocery contributions to the Ram Love before its resources become an inundate, inundate, become inundate. In these circumstances, these residents should not be required to pay a millage of thirty-four point seven million dollars for unnecessary things. Our water bills increased illegally to pay for a new. DBW building. Some of these people's only income is social security or military disability payments. My late wife and I never voted against a school millage in sixty-five years. For the first time, I've voted against the thirty-four point seven millions school billings in November and expect to vote against the same unneeded school millage for the reasons given above, among the reasons for voting against it on May second. Some are all the, some are all of the unnecessary items that could be donated by citizens who can afford to do so. Thank you.
This is interesting. Uh, my name is Ezra Scott. I'm from New Buffalo Township, but sixty-six years ago and twenty-three days, I was a resident, because that's where I was born, at the hospital. So that's my tie to Buchanan, Struffling family. Um, I'm a past Marion County Commissioner for the last six years for District Nine. Sat five years on the Finance Committee, uh, for the county, and I was the past Vice Chair of the County Board. And it's kind of odd, but tonight, um, I'm soon to be a candidate for the United States Senate for the state of Michigan, Debbie Stavon, obviously. for the state of Michigan, Debbie Stavon, obviously. I study a lot of bills and a lot of things in Washington DC. I read them, yeah, the 2,000 pages. I would just like to make this, the community and the board and everybody know that regarding the 43% increase in the water, someone needs, from the city here, needs to look at House Resolution 3684. It's the infrastructure bill that was passed on 11/15 of '21 in Congress. Of that, there's $111 billion available for water and water-related projects, and it also has to do with, I believe, buildings and infrastructure, water lines and pumping stations and all that. It's a grant process. If you happen to need some help with a grant, I would suggest getting ahold of Southwest Michigan Planning Commission through the county, grant writers, to maybe help facilitate some of that, or get ahold of the congressman, or our state senators, but that money is available. And yeah, it's taxpayer money. It's all of our money. I would much rather come to Buchanan than go to Kansas. That's just me. The next thing on the school issues, our children are the most important part of our lives. They really are, and we need to support those kids. I'm here to let somebody from the school board also know that under House Bill 3684 of the infrastructure bill, there's a $100 billion available for the schools, and that includes the availability for new buildings, upgrades to existing buildings, and add new HVACs, equipment for the purity. There's also, under the COVID Relief Fund, there's, I believe, $250 billion still available for schools to apply for, for a lot of the COVID upgrade money for the HVAC systems and things like that. So I just wanted to give this as a learning process of some of the things that I have found out, and I think it's important as a community, as a city, to take care of your infrastructure and as a community of schools, to apply for the money that's our money already. Let's bring it back here to Marion County is what I say. Thank you.
I live at 729 North Detroit Street. I have attended school board meetings regularly, not this year, '23, but for the first two years before that. On October 19th, 2021, I wrote to the trustees, Burnett, Ryder, Lash, Lee, and Barry, and I have a letter I sent. It's four pages long. I had presented the information at a school board meeting, but in three minutes, it's hard to convey four pages. So I wrote a letter, and in summary, the letter I wrote says, "I sat in discomfort for three hours in the high school auditorium because of unhealthy air. There was a fan in the back that wasn't turned on, only one door was open. I had an allergic reaction that lasted for days. As a retired college professor, I can tell you, students do spread colds and flu. Buchanan could have completely overhauled ventilation systems at that time with American Rescue Plan flexible funds to pay for it. They could have used money from the hundreds of thousands of COVID funds they've received, and a lot of use of funds were HVAC. Addressing the school's needs for healthy air should have been a priority during a pandemic and would have assured safety during future disease outbreaks while improving student learning. If you have better air quality, your brain works better. Poorly ventilated schools are super spreaders. The John Hopston Plan I included in the letter says to bring in as much outdoor air as possible, upgrade to high-efficiency filters, less than $500, switch fans from auto to on, and open windows, both of which are free. Students, teachers, and staff deserve healthy air and proper ventilation that improves health and education. Why wasn't it done? The HVAC that they want now? Why wasn't that done before that bond proposal? Other school districts use private funds for sports program enhancements. This school can apply for the Esser Emergency Funds that Ezra mentioned, and should have done that immediately when I said, "There's something wrong with the air here." Why put this burden on the taxpayers at a time of historic inflation? This city commission has already levied a five-year, 43% water bill increase. We face a 5% property tax increase. And we're probably going to be paying for the downtown, right, Dan?
Ms. Johnson.
Yeah, and when I walk the sidewalks, I'm now going to walk a household.
Ms. Johnson, that's three minutes.
Pardon me?
That's three minutes.
I, I, I would like permission to finish this.
If I, if I let everyone speak more than three minutes, we'll be here all night.
Right, but at the previous meeting.
Ma'am, I've held everyone else to three minutes.
You allow the school board committee to speak as long as they want it.
That's not true. Michelle Funkhauser, 820 Totem Lane, Niles, Michigan. Why Buchanan means a lot to me. The Williams family arrived here from Nebraska, moving with friends, in a home behind the Moose Club where blankets served as partition walls. My dad walked to kindergarten on his first day wearing knickers, and yes, he was bullied. Korean War veteran who joined the Navy when he was too young to do so without his parents' signature. And when he died, we gathered at the American Legion. He was a member there for more than 50 years, and he was honored with a 21-gun salute. The Jess Wine family, my grandpa knew a bit about the infrastructure and the construction in this community. It was a proud moment when this man from Buchanan purchased the first Caterpillar bulldozer this side of the Mississippi. Their home was primarily constructed using reclaimed materials from a home that was being demolished. What is breaking my heart is the things that I'm being told, even the water, the quality and the cost, when I hear firsthand that people are not emptying their bathtubs and they're using their bathwater to flush their toilets. That's not everybody's story, but I want to speak to the people who, it is happening for some. And I ponder the principle requiring good stewardship and then wonder what in the heck is happening here? And how, how did this community get to where we are? I find the attempt to add a third school bond on top of the current two is egregious. I'm hearing from enough citizens that they are going to be displaced, they will have to leave their homes. And I just think Ezra brought up some good ideas on how maybe these things can happen in a better way that won't displace citizens. Some of them have been in their homes for generations. Bankruptcy's been indicated by some, and the names might surprise you. Business owners have indicated they're going to have to relocate or close their doors, and that then affects our citizens, there will be more unemployment. In other school systems, I know that they have gone to prior graduates and gotten, gotten the money that they wanted to do some of the things that they desire. I know personally, Romy Hamus was proud to be able to fund and sponsor the Notre Dame bookstore. And I know that there's graduates from Buchanan who would be willing to say yes, they just haven't been asked. And I don't know why that doesn't happen, why we haven't gone to some of the very successful graduates and some of our wealthy citizens. The Esser Funds, I looked at stats, and these were dated March 2nd, and that indicates approximately 1.8 million, or more than 54% of the 3.3 million allocated and approved is still outstanding, and I don't know why those remain unused. A list of high-poverty schools that's dated March 20 under Buchanan, they name Moccasin, Ottawa, the Middle and High School, among others. And from tables in this report, they indicate the top three, the highest top three needs in every student group is the necessity that priority is given for academic success in literacy and mathematics. Awesome.
That's three minutes. Thank you. Anyone else wish to make a public comment?
James Busby, I'm on 319 Elizabeth. I'm gonna make this real quick. First, I'm gonna speak about the schools.
Could you speak into the mic?
I love Buchanan schools. It's a resort of sports. Scholarship paid for my education. Buchanan has come a long way. We have one young lady here that was on our state championship team for our girls.
Two?
Two. Buchanan has been put back on the map because of our athletics. I still have people to this day coming to me talking about the '76, '78 state championship team, the girls' state championship team, what our baseball team did, what our softball team did, and what the girls did this year. So why would not we want to improve our schools? Why would anybody want to vote against making it better? It's beyond me. The second thing, I just want to talk a little bit about the improvements of the city. You know, we still have a few potholes that need to be fixed. Victory Park, the water fountain was taken out, which is just beyond me. We know the reason why it was taken out, let's be real about it. That needs to come back. That sign right there says Buchanan, "Life is better here." We got to own up to that. We were in the news because we were supposedly the best city in America. We got to own up to that. We can't be fighting with each other, we can't be lying, being dishonest, because we all are supposed to be doing this for a good cause. Right? My son is over in Syria right now, serving this country, where they have to watch their back if they disagree. If we disagree, we don't have to worry about somebody shooting a missile at us, but we need to be respectful of everybody. Stop the name-calling, the lying, the BS. And the last thing I want to make, who's responsible for the parking lot at Dollar General? Is that in the near future to get that fixed? It's becoming a nightmare. I almost got hit the other day because me and the other person both were trying to avoid the pothole. So, that's all.
Thank you.
Brandon Wagener, 11 North Detroit Street. I want to talk to you a little bit about how I view our city. I've been a resident here for 22 years, I've also been an educator for 26. I've done everything from being a teacher to assistant superintendent, and I apologize that, that the bond issue is being brought into this, into this room tonight. It really doesn't belong here in this room. But what I want to say to you is that this, over those 26 years being an educator, I've been a part of bonds, many bonds, some have failed, some have passed. All of those either passed or failed based on the merits of that bond. They passed or failed because the citizens voted based on those facts. My understanding that there have been some people spreading misinformation, I want to call it that, misinformation. And I'm going to presume positive intentions, that somehow somebody misinformed them. Now here's the deal. I, as a citizen of Buchanan who's very proud of our schools, I absolutely love what Mrs. Robinson is doing at the school district. I love what's been happening here over the years with Dr. Vanderline when she was here, and I want to see that positive momentum continue. And I'm here to tell you that I'm going to support that bond, and I ask the citizens of Buchanan to also support that bond. Thank you.
This is new to me. First, I want to thank the board for what you've done. What, what interests me is, this is my first meeting, watching your guys' reaction. This is our school, our city. You guys are put there to represent us. Everything I've heard is, the school's important. That's the future of Buchanan. We need to support that. And not put it down, I put it to the side, but support it. So number two, those gentlemen back here, redeveloping Buchanan. Growing up in Buchanan my whole life, 47 years, I can remember road to roadies, I can remember downtown, we never had leave Buchanan, but yet we take our money to Sturgis. We take everything we need away from the city when we should be supporting our city. Put the money back here, we have banks here. We have businesses that need to be brought here, jobs. You bring jobs in, you have more residents. Thing is, you look at some of these roads, you go up by McCord Creek, the roads are horrible. If you come down Fulton Street, Elizabeth Street, there's a sinkhole on Fulton Street. Nobody's come down there. See, our finest come down there in their vehicles, and they avoid certain areas. Why? Because it'll do damage. Damage. That's not what Buchanan's about. Buchanan's about building, upbuilding, encouraging. We have a scholarship, I have kids that have accepted or received that scholarship here in Buchanan. But now we want to take it away from them? Maybe not the scholarship, but chance and opportunity to be where you gentlemen are someday. But if you take that away from us and our children and our future, what happens in Buchanan? No longer will you be able to read where it's the finest place to live. No longer will it be the finest place. If you look at Detroit, you look at some of these larger inner cities, or even big cities, they take the money out, what happens? You know? Support our community, support our people. You guys are there not for your own personal interests or ideas, but for what we want, because we live here, just like you guys do. I'm here to school, that's what we want. Support that. Put it back in. I'm Moccasin, I went there, there's such magic, I can tell you all kinds of names. Mr. O'Brien.
Hasn't changed.
Hasn't changed. All these years, it still hasn't changed. Why not put the money back in? I'm a mason, did some work down in Indiana during COVID. Knocked out some walls, some block walls, and put in some good air filters. Kids are back there. We want our kids sick, taken home to their families. What happened to COVID? Starts with one, before you know it, becomes a plague. Same thing with the attitude, the personalities of Buchanan. Bring negative stuff in, instead of having positive mental attitude, positive thought, it changes our behavior, it becomes a plague. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thomas Wilson, Front Street, Buchanan. I'm not here to complain, usually when I come here, I ask questions. Earlier in the year, I was asked to be a delegate for the Marion County Republican Club, delegate for our precinct, which is Precinct 2. It goes from Front Street north, south, Front Street, south. We've heard from a lot of good people here tonight, people that are speaking their hearts, their feelings, and everyone's going to agree. I don't care how you vote, I don't care what your feelings are, I don't care what you do as far as the school bond is concerned. One way or the other, I think it'll work out the way it's supposed to work out. When I represent the people as a delegate for my precinct, I took that position because they voted me in. I didn't know anything about it. I didn't know what my job was, I didn't know what I was going to do, and I'm still learning. But I took it with the idea that, okay, I'm going to represent the people for my precinct. I don't care if you're a Democrat, I don't care if you're a Republican, I don't care what your politics or religion is. what your politics or religion is, you're in Buchanan. And my job is to represent you. I've talked to people in my, in my district, my precinct, and I tell them the same story. And I say, if you have a problem, if there's something I can help you with politically, or you have an issue, come to me. I give them my name, I give them my address, my phone number, I'll be glad to help you. I realize that this school bond issue is not your problem. It shouldn't be addressed here tonight, that needs to be addressed at the school board. And these same strong feelings, both sides need to be put on the table so people can vote their hearts. So, I say, this Buchanan, stick together. People have to stick together, there's no reason to be fighting over something. Vote on it, vote your heart, let it come out the way it's supposed to be, but then whatever it is, support it. That's what I'm gonna do. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Tom Muncheski, and I'm a precinct delegate for the city of Buchanan. I'm a numbers guy, a nitpicker, and a perfectionist. And right now, the bond proposal that is before us would increase the school debt by three hundred and twenty-seven percent, three hundred and thirty percent, approximately right around that. And yet, when I went to the calculator that the school board has provided to figure out what my tax increase would be, it mentioned a two percent, I mean a two mil increase. Now, we have a ten point seven million bond obligation for the school board, and they currently have a three point five mil assessment for that, it's low understanding anyway. How are we gonna raise the debt by three hundred and twenty-seven percent, three hundred and thirty percent, and yet only raise the mileage by somewhere between, I've seen two different numbers, only raise the mileage by between sixty, seventy percent, and a hundred and five or a hundred and ten percent? The numbers just don't add up. So I'm not sure I can support the bond issue until I get answers to that. And I would urge every citizen to have the same opinion, how we need to, we need to have answers on how the numbers come together before we can make the decision on whether to support this bond issue. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Jerry Flinner, one six four eight five, near some street. I'm actually kinda pointing this, this isn't bond stuff, by the way. I came down to the city the other day and got what's called the Code of Conduct for city employees. And it's very clear that a city commissioner and also a manager of one of the events that goes on downtown during the summer are abusing the Code of Conduct. Under section four, media communications and professional standards, it clearly says, "Social media includes internet and mobile-based applications and websites." Goes on and on and on. It does say it includes Facebook. Well, there is a, a number of city employees that are purposely putting out false information on Facebook. Under professional standards, it says, "Covered individuals shall make truthful, factual statements and not knowingly misrepresent, mischaracterize, or misquote information." I'm the man that met personally, face to face with Dan. I met with him, I showed him the facts. He says there's no difference from the November bond issue to this bond issue. There's probably ten or twelve major changes to that. And he comes out with the banner the very next thing, the next day or two, that says, "There are no changes." Same, it is the same amount of money, he's right there, I get him that. And then, the very last thing that I wanna point out, and please get a Code of Conduct and make sure that all, my recommendation is, and this is what we had to do where I worked, is everybody had to get this that worked for the city and they had to sign off on it. So that, you already got that? Thank you. It says, "Sanctions for violations. The city commission, following a hearing and finding a violation under this code, by a simple majority, vote to impose sanctions or take actions to address violations of this code, including removal from office." All I've got to say. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Can I use my last minute?
I'd like to see if there's anyone, since you've already spoke, if you have wait, is there anyone else who should make a public comment?
Give you one minute.
One minute?
I know when I was in Fulton, three minutes was a long round. The one thing that I wanted to impress on the committee is the fact that I do not, talking to people as I travel around my precinct, those people cannot afford an increase in their taxes, they cannot, as far as the water taxes concerned, as far as the school tax, they're living in poverty. If you visit that area and you visit those neighborhoods, that's, that's pretty much poverty, and there are the pockets in the city as well. So what I'm asking is the board to consider the people that elected you. Go out and talk to the people, understand where they are, what their income is, what their level of living standard is, and then vote your hearts, if you're doing the right thing for the people that elected you.
Anyone else who should make a public comment?
Chris Carlson, Niles Township, Buchanan Community Schools, Board of Education. Lot of comments about the bond tonight, I just wanna let everybody know, there were some questions that needed to be answered. April sixth at six o'clock PM, there'll be an open house at Moxon Elementary, including tours by staff members. April twentieth, six PM, Buchanan High School, same thing, Moxon's gonna be starting in the gym, Buchanan High School will start in the auditorium. April fifteenth at ten AM, you can go to either school for the same program. Folks will be there happily to answer some of the questions. Regarding some of the dollar amounts, I encourage you to email Superintendent Robinson or call her office, she's busy running a district of fifteen hundred kids, but she'll get you the information that you need. Those three open houses that are being held though, I think everybody will find very informational, to help you make the decision that is best for you and your family and your household. Thank you.
Anyone else who should make a public comment? Thank you all for your comments. Let's move down to executive comments.
Okay, I'll be brief. I met with our treasure and finance committee last week, and we're working on several issues there relating to budget, the audit, and bank reconciliation and all others. On a couple of occasions, we have met with and listened to some concerned citizens in my office, and we hope to address their issues. We have an open door policy, and we're here to try to listen and see what we can do to help everybody out, so that's all I got.
Thank you. Would you speak?
Thank you, everybody, for showing up in full force tonight, we always appreciate a healthy audience. I'm not gonna make any additional comments on the bond, you can look at my comments from last week, our last session, to know how I feel about that. I wanna say thank you to Richard Martin, I noticed a bunch of red Xs down my street recently for some tree cuts that were gonna basically eliminate the entire tree candidate on Moxon. Richard jumped right on it, came out, did an assessment, him and Mike and some others are working with the AP to find a positive solution to resolve that without us cutting down all those trees, so I'm really appreciative, appreciative of that effort, I caught him today, he dragged me out there on the road before the meeting just to look at every one of them, so I know there's more people to thank than just that group too, so thank you if I missed you. That's all I have to say tonight, once again, thank you, everybody, for being here.
Mr. Busby?
I'm not gonna talk about the bond, but I wanna make something very clear. The Code of Ethics, I've been studying ethics for forty years, and supervising the men all my life, reading it. The previous city manager had to sign that Code of Ethics because, well, she's gone now, so I don't need to say anymore on that. You elected me, or people like you elected me, people like you will have to put me out. It's almost impossible, and it's very expensive. So when you start talking about getting rid of the commissioner, because he came out with a different opinion than what y'all have, and it's not lies, I mean, I have never called anyone of you a liar, but I have to sit up here and listen to y'all call me a liar, and I sat here and took it quite gracefully. It's not misinformation, it's not wrong information, it's different information, and it's looked at from a different point of view. I don't feel one way or the other, I am not gonna feel bad if it passes. If it passes, it'll go forward, but I guarantee you, it'll be my fault if it fails, which is not right either. So you really ought to think and look at the mirror, look in the mirror when you're calling me a liar. And look at the history of school boards and the history of the city, and what they've done in the city, and how long it's taken them to do anything in the city, and how well they've really done it. And I am a strong advocate for the city, believe me. So I just wanted to make perfectly clear that these four men up here, they can sanction me, but they cannot put me out of office. Just, that's all I've got to say here.
Well, I'll reiterate what Patrick and Daniel both said, thanks, everybody, for being here, stating your opinions. Once again, your opinions are your opinions, and opinions are like everybody else's. So, that being said, we, oh, I quit. We do appreciate, we do appreciate everybody's being here, and like I said, I hold total respect for all of these guys that sit up here, I reiterate that every meeting, because the job that we have to do is not always the job that people like, but, you know, we try to do the best with what we got and what we're working with. So, I also wanna thank Mr. Baker back there, I've seen him out and about this last two weeks, making a lot of repairs in the city of Buchanan, I know Mr. Busby talked about the potholes and everything, I'm quite sure those will all be taken care of by the time Memorial Day comes, because there's a lot of us that don't wanna walk through those, so we will make sure that that's taken care of. But once again, thank you, everyone, for being here. Mr. Mayor, take it away.
First thing I wanna do, while I have the opportunity, is to thank Rich Murphy for the amount of hard work that he's done since he's been here. I don't think people realize the hours he puts in, and the things that he's accomplished in the short time he's been here, but he's been working his tail off on getting grants, and he's made a lot of progress in Victory Park area and at the North River Park, and so I wanna commend Rich for all his hard work, I just appreciate it, thank you. Misinformation seems to be the word of the night, and I, you know, I appreciate Mr. Scott, I appreciate what you had to say. I had posted this on Facebook earlier this week, and it's a good visual, and if you'd like to see it after the meeting, I'm willing to have to share it with you. It's old, it's from twenty twenty-one, but I have the bookkeeper working on updating this, and I will try and share it once it's done. But it shows the small amount of money that the city collects in taxes, that the city actually gets to collect and use for the city. The rest of the money is other taxes that are collected, that the city doesn't get as a revenue. Buchanan is really unique in a lot of ways. We have our own police force, for the size of community that we have, we have our own police force. And we have very little commercial industrial property, so there's very little tax revenue, and we have to bear the burden. There's two, we, and unfortunately, our infrastructure is extremely outdated, and it has to be fixed, or we're all going to be flushing our toilets from water in our bathtubs, and I don't wanna do that. I don't wanna drink our water. So these things have to be done, they're necessities. And we unfortunately have the task of trying to figure out how we're going to do that with the very limited resources that we have. It's not easy, and we are doing the very best that we can, I can assure you. No one wants to see our water bills keep going up, none of us. But we can either go out for revenue bonds that we can get from our water department, or we can raise our taxes. Either way, we have to pay for it somehow. What we all need to do is keep showing up to meetings like this and putting our heads together, because there's tons of smart people in this room, and we can figure it out together, or we can call each other names and get on Facebook and tear each other apart, which isn't helpful. So I would encourage all of you to keep coming to these meetings for subjects other than the school bond, because we have a lot of tough issues that we're facing. So I appreciate you all being here, and I encourage you to keep showing up.
One more quick thing on the pothole issue. The city eight years ago destroyed the sidewalk by my house when they removed a tree, and I was told by then JT, Akerson, and Bill Marcus were no longer here, that they would be off to fix it the next week, that's been eight years ago. The sidewalk is a safety hazard, I have mentioned it several times at meetings, and to the former city manager, to DPW workers, hasn't been done yet. Rich Murphy, I showed it to him when he was at the house with me, one of our little kids who ride their bikes flipped over it, and in addition to the hole that was in the street, thank goodness she didn't get hurt. So my question is, why hasn't it been fixed yet, when I was told eight years ago that it was gonna be fixed in two weeks?
I have to talk to...
And that's the reply that we always get in the past, well, I gotta talk to this first, well, no, let me talk to this first.
I understand, I understand, but unfortunately, we have jobs that we do, we don't work full-time for the city. So we're taking a lot of time of our own time to come to these meetings, to do the research and reading that we have to do. I wanna help you, Mr. Busby, I really do, and we're trying.
It just seems like on the North End, everything is always pushed back. It just takes so long to get...
I'm very proud of the work that we've done in your...
I didn't say I wasn't proud, I said it takes so long.
And I didn't say you didn't, I said I'm very proud of the work we're doing.
You know, for a fact, last year, we talked about the basketball nets in May, the whole summer went, we ain't got a basketball net put up yet. If we can't get a basketball net, we can't get nothing.
I have to talk to the committee.
Everybody needs to hear that, though, in here.
Okay, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to the gentleman.
I'll support.
One?
Yes.
That's it.
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Your turn.